So, good evening and welcome to the 5:00 PM Tulsa City Council meeting. You can view the meeting on our Facebook page, Channel 24, or at Tgavonline.org. Tonight assisting the council, Jack Blair, City Attorney, Lori Doring, Secretary of the Council, and Chris Bachman, Council staff. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, please see Chris to complete a request to speak card prior to the item being read. You will not be able to be allowed to speak on any item that has already been read. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then is Father Stephen here? Oh, right there. Okay, then we'll have you come up.
(inaudible)
If you'll remain standing, Father Stephen, if you'll come up.
Oh God, who art so good, we give you thanks for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon our city. We ask you to continue to bless us abundantly. In particular, we ask you to bless our elected officials, that they may continue to guide us as we strive to do your will. And please continue to bless our city and all her residents. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We hope to see you back soon, Father Stephen. Thank you. Vanessa? It has us first, but would you like to go ahead and give your proclamation, or would you like us to?
No, it's up to you.
You want to go ahead and give it?
Okay. I'm here to read the proclamation for National Safe Place Week, and it reads, "Whereas Safe Place, a national outreach and prevention program for youth in need of immediate help and safety, has operated in the city of Tulsa and surrounding areas since 1991. And whereas National Safe Place Week is an opportunity to nationally recognize more than 22,000 businesses and organizations, as well as thousands of volunteers who give their time, resources, and energy to make our country a safer place for young people. And whereas in the Tulsa area, Safe Place is operated by Youth Services of Tulsa and has provided shelter, access to more than 5,600 youth, making safety readily available to these youth in crises. And whereas the Tulsa community has many businesses that have charitably opened their doors to offer Safe Place and Safe Place trained employees, including QuickTrip, Tulsa City County Library, Tulsa Glass Blowing School, MedWise, Urgent Care, Tulsa Transit, IMSA, and the Tulsa Fire Department. And whereas the city of Tulsa is grateful to have Safe Place operating in our community, supporting our future generation with the opportunity for free access to qualified and compassionate assistance to work through a crisis situation. Now therefore, we the mayor of the city of Tulsa and the Tulsa City Council do hereby proclaim the week of March 17th through the 23rd, 2024, as National Safe Place Week. And witness thereof, we hereby set our hands on this 13th day of March, 2024." Congratulations, and thank you for all the work that you all do.
I just want to say thank you to the city of Tulsa and to my city councillor, Vanessa Hall Harper, and thank you Tulsa community for being a beacon here to help us make sure the young people in crises get the help that they need.
Thank you. Thank you all. (applause) Oh, we want to get one here in the middle.
(inaudible)
Okay. Just a reminder, if you know someone that's a citizen that are doing great work in our city, please let the councillors of the district they live in, or any of the councillors, know, because we'd like to award and give a special recognition. And today, this is really an honor, because this is one of my favorite things that we get to do, is recognition for our employees. Without our 3,300 employees, our city would not keep your water flowing, it would not fill the potholes, it would not go out and see where you have a water leak. So with this honor, this is one of the best for all the council. And good evening, the city of Tulsa has an incredible team of over 3,500 public servants dedicated to making all aspects of city government run smoothly. Every month, the city council is pleased to recognize some of those exceptional public servants who have committed decades of their life in the career with the city. Whereas the employees have dedicated years of service to the city, its officials, and its citizens, and therefore we, the Tulsa City Council, and Mayor G.T. Bynum, do hereby express our sincere appreciation for these employees' years of hard work, dedication, and continued service to the city of Tulsa and its citizens. And witness thereof, we hereby set our hands on this 20th day, 13th day of March of 2024. When your name is called, please come to the front, and we would like to give you your award. Also, we would like to take a picture, and I'd like for all the council to be up here too, because without you, our service as councillors could not be the same. For 40 years of service, Robert L... Is it Friend?
(inaudible)
Yes. Would you like to come on up from Asset Management? (applause)
Thank you very much, and here's your 40-year pin. It should be made of gold.
Keep us straight on this, Krista. Robert, we get to stand in the middle. Yeah, the middle. All right, one, two, three. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For 25 years of service, Cindy A. Martin, Tulsa Fire Department.
Proclamation, and we want to frame that for sure. On a big thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your service. (inaudible) Matt Littke.
Need a license.
For 25 years.
Thank you.
You're still working, yeah?
At least six more years.
I've worn it down, so it's always (inaudible). All right, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Public Works, or excuse me, Phil Dunn, Water and Sewer. Phil, for 25 years.
Truly a great name. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you so much for all you do. All right, one, two, three. Okay. Tobias Moreland, Asset Management. Asset Management.
Hey, thank you very much. Proclamation, I know you'll keep that someplace really nice.
(inaudible) Do you want to come up with your voice? Mark, you want a picture? We bring both of them. What's that?
He probably doesn't need a applause.
One, two, three. Mark, come on. Come on.
He's good.
Come on. He's going to watch you. (inaudible) All right, one, two, three. Okay. Thank you. For 20 years, Keith J. Harrison, Public Works.
Thank you very much. There you go. This is the most important part. There you go. Might get your free meal.
All right, one, two, three. Many employees who are receiving the Years of Service Award this month could not be here tonight. We would also like to acknowledge their contributions. 45 years of service, Dennis Larson, Tulsa Police. 35 years. Thank you. Mark Clements, Municipal Courts. Charles W. Wilf and James T. Wilkerson, both police officers. For 30 years of service, Jeff Wilcox, Terry Zivedon, Robert Sykes, and John E. Smith, all with Tulsa Fire. For 25 years of service, Rex Crossley, Public Works, and Jason Mars, Water and Sewer. For 20 years of service, Marvin L. Thorbs, Rod Vega, and Sidney Hardnok, all from Water and Sewer. The continued growth of the city is direct result of the values of employees that served our city, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. This is a true representation of service, excellent loyalty, and commitment. Their work does not go unnoticed, and their many sacrifices are truly appreciated. And we just can't thank our employees enough for all they do. So, thank all of you. Thank the people. (applause) Special presentations, we have none announcements. People wishing to speak on an agenda item are limited to five minutes total per meeting. We're using electronic timing system in front of the speaker at the microphone. There's a timer that will count down time used. A green light will indicate running, yellow, you have 30 seconds, and red, your time has expired. We ask that you stay within your time limit, so everyone wishing to speak is given equal time. Thank you. Please keep the podium, air railings, aisles free from recording devices and tripods. Recording equipment, accessories, including tripods, must be set up in the media center. As posted on tonight's agenda, certain items are subject to consideration of possible approval, adoption, denial, amendment, and revision. I call this meeting to order. Will you please call the roll?
Councillor Hall Harper?
Here.
Councillor Q?
Yes, here.
Councillor Patrick?
Here.
Councillor Bellis?
Here.
Councillor Miller?
Here.
Councillor Bengal?
Here.
Councillor Lakin?
Here.
Councillor Fowler?
Here.
Councillor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Councillor Q?
Yes.
Councillor Patrick?
Yes.
Councillor Bellis?
Yes.
Councillor Miller?
Yes.
Items 1A and 2B are approved, two appointments and reappointments. A, Jody Williams', appointment to the Greater Tulsa African American Affairs Commission, replacing Greg Robinson, term expires May 1st. Do we have any speakers?
We have one speaker, Mr. Houghines.
Thank you, councillors. Yes, thank you to our Honorable Madam Chair, Jeanne Q., and our respected council leadership, the great council staff, our appreciated council secretary and city attorney, our Honorable Mayor, G.T. Bynum, First Lady Susan Bynum, and our excellent security as well. We are thankful to the citizens of this great city of love, Tulsa, Oklahoma. It is a joy to be with you on this 13th day of March in the year of our loving Lord, Jesus Christ, 2024. Yes. Appointments and reappointments. A, Jody Williams', appointment to the Greater Tulsa Area African American Affairs Commission. These family members are awesome people. May we continue to honor all our volunteers, employees, and indeed, everyone. Thank you, family.
Thank you, Mr. Houghines. Council discussion.
Move to approve item 2A.
Second?
Please call the roll.
Councillor Bengal?
Yes.
Councillor Dr.
Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Lakin?
Yes.
Councillor Fowler?
Yes.
Councillor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Councillor Q?
Yes.
Councillor Patrick?
Yes.
Councillor Bellis?
Yes.
Councillor Miller?
Yes.
Item 2A is approved. Is Ms. Jody Williams here tonight? We always give the opportunity for our appointees to be able to come and speak, so thank you for giving back, Ms. Williams, to your city. Three, public meetings. There's no items tonight. Four, mayor's items. Mayor's report on community events, briefings on city activities, city efforts, and new business. Item 4B will be read separately. B, resolution relating to the incurring of indebtedness by trustees of the TMU, excuse me, Tulsa Municipal Utility Authority, for the purpose of funding the cost of construction, acquisition, and equipment capital improvements for the system of the Tulsa Municipal Utility Authority by issuing the Tulsa Municipal Authority Revenue Bonds, Section 2024(a) and 2024(b). Principal not to exceed $64 million, $305,000. 64,300... I mean, 64 million. Sorry, I'm getting off here a little bit. 64,345,000 dollars, authorizing appropriate city officers to approve documents and take action as may be necessary required with the emergency clause. Are there any speakers?
We have no speakers on item 4B.
Council discussion.
Move to approve the resolution with the emergency clause on 4B.
Second?
We'll read the emergency clause separately.
That's right, sorry. Move to approve the resolution.
Second?
Councillor Bengal?
Yes.
Councillor Lakin?
Yes.
Councillor Fowler?
Yes.
Councillor Q?
Yes.
Councillor Patrick?
Here.
Councillor Bellis?
Here.
Councillor Miller?
Here.
Emergency clause for 4B is approved. The remaining items, 4C through I, will not be read aloud. However, public comments will be received on these items. Lori, do we have any speakers?
We have...
Chris, do we have any speakers?
We do have three speakers, first on items 4D, E, H, and I. Mr. Houghines.
Yes, thank you, councillors. Mayor's item D, a travel donation from International Association of Firefighters, Local 176, in the amount of $4,500 for Lieutenant Craig Dearinwater, Lieutenant Greg McCourt, and firefighter Mark Milstead, to travel to Santiago, Chile on March 18th through 28th, 2024, to provide training in firefighting, safety, and survival techniques. We are fortunate to have said skilled, knowledgeable firefighters. I am grateful for all our first responders. For E, a travel donation from Yale School of Management in the amount of $740 for Mayor Bynum to travel to Washington, DC, to participate and speak on behalf of the city at the Yale Mayor's College. I researched and found that apparently 10 congregational ministers founded Yale. The Britannica tells us congregationalists have regarded the confession, Jesus is Lord, as a sufficient basis for membership. Jesus Christ, they believe, is their only mediator. Mayor's item H, a special event application, St. Patrick's Day Block Party, and they do have inflatables here, by the way. Now regarding St. Patrick, a firm conviction that the gospel of Jesus Christ can positively transform lives led St. Patrick to evangelize Ireland and beyond with the truth of God's Word, the Holy Scriptures. Mayor's item I, special event application, St. Francis Savior Catholic Church, Good Friday Silent Night Procession, scheduled for March 29th, 2024, at St. Francis Savior Catholic Church. Catholics are loving, promote the life, the culture of life, and the rights of the unborn. I'm glad they celebrate the Eucharist, the body and blood of Jesus, plus they celebrate the virgin birth and the resurrection of Jesus Christ. Veneration of the cross and solemn intercessions, a set of shared prayer intentions offered universally on this day, are other unique elements to the Good Friday service. Yes, in 2024, Good Friday occurs on March 29th. It's a solemn day that calls for fasting and abstinence. This event is a procession with the Virgin Mary and her son, Jesus, in our hearts and minds. Jesus lived a perfect life, then, as the Son of God and the Son of Mary. Jesus was crucified, shed his blood for our sins, died, and rose again. Yes, this event, the passion of our Lord Jesus lent in processions, will help us to remember his great love for us, his passion for us. In this event, Jesus's love for us is being celebrated solemnly, yet joyfully. The event sponsors, St. Francis Savior Catholic Church, should be commended for their keeping this event in our thinking. Jesus did say, "Remember me," which I call there. This mayor's item is likely to be approved, as much of our planet will also be remembering and celebrating the death, burial, and resurrection of our soon-coming global leader, Jesus Christ. And councillors, thank you for loving Tulsa, and for always doing your best to help Tulsa be her best. Thank you, family.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker, item 4E, Mr. James Alexander Jr.
Good evening, councillors. My opinion is like different, in that your mayor, our mayor, no, your mayor, went to Washington, DC, on March 4th through the 6th, and gave a testimony of how wonderful Tulsa is, and he didn't tell the truth. Tulsa's not a wonderful place to live. I've lived here practically all my life until I went to college and I came back. Tulsa is not a wonderful place to live. He went to study management at Yale, and he's getting ready to leave, so I don't know why he took this trip. It makes no sense, because he'll be gone in a couple of months. I'm against this. I know you're going to pass it. We don't really need it. We don't need people going outside of the city telling different places how wonderful Tulsa is, and Tulsa's not a wonderful place. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Next speaker.
Ms. Bernice Alexander.
Good evening, councillors.
Good evening. So I want to speak to the same item concerning the mayor, making this trip, and I object to him making this trip, serving as a speaker, with this blatant continuation and disregard for the African-American citizens in this city. There's a scripture in the Bible that says, "My people are destroyed for lack of knowledge, because they reject knowledge," in Hosea, Book of Hosea, Chapter 4, verse 6. And what is knowledge? I'm still on the subject, that there are some things that money cannot buy. So, money cannot buy knowledge. What is knowledge? Facts, information, skills acquired by a person through experience, education, religion, or...
This event is a procession with the Virgin Mary and her son, Jesus, in our hearts and minds. Jesus lived a perfect life then as the son of God and the son of Mary. Jesus was crucified, shed his blood for our sins, died, and rose again. Yes, this event, the passion of our Lord Jesus lent in processions will help us to remember his great love for us, his passion for us. In this, in this event, Jesus' love for us is being celebrated solemnly, yet joyfully. The event sponsors, Saint Francis Savior Catholic Church, should be commended for their keeping this event in our thinking. Jesus did say, "Remember me." This mayor's item is likely to be approved as much of our planet will also be remembering and celebrating the death, burial, and resurrection of our soon-coming global leader, Jesus Christ. And, councilors, thank you for loving Tulsa and for always doing your best to help Tulsa be her best. Thank you, family.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker, item four E, Mr. James Alexander, Jr.
Good evening, councilors. My opinion is like, um, different. In that, uh, your mayor, our mayor, no, your mayor, went to Washington, DC on March fourth through the sixth and gave a testimony of how wonderful Tulsa is. And he didn't tell the truth. Tulsa's not a wonderful place to live. I've lived here practically all my life until I went to college and I came back. Tulsa is not a wonderful place to live. He went to study management at Yale. And he's getting ready to leave, so I don't know why he took this trip. It makes no sense to me because he'll be gone in a couple of months. I'm against this. I know you're gonna pass it. We don't really need it. We don't need people going outside of the city telling different places how wonderful Tulsa is. And Tulsa's not a wonderful place. Any question?
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Next speaker.
Ms. Bernice Alexander.
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
So, I want to speak to the same item concerning the mayor making this trip. And I object to him making this trip, serving as a speaker with this blatant continuation and disregard for the African-American citizens in this city. Uh, there's a scripture in the Bible that says, "My people are destroyed for lack of knowledge" because they reject knowledge in Hosea, uh, the Book of Hosea, chapter four, verse six. And what is knowledge? I'm still on the subject, there, that there are some things that money cannot buy. So, money cannot buy knowledge. Uh, what is knowledge? Facts, information, skills acquired by a person through experience, education, religion, or practical understanding of subjects. I have to take a deep breath because we are constantly working on the behalf of the community for things that we should not have to be working on. Still talking about knowledge, being aware of what is going on, how our taxpayer dollars are being spent, and how, for example, the mayor is representing this city, about his, I guess, uh, service as the mayor of the city. Another example of the work that we are continuing to do. I filed a complaint with the state attorney and HUD on behalf of the North Tulsa community concerning water bills. And HUD sent money in to the city of Tulsa, and Tulsa passed it to DHS to help people pay their water bills so that their services would not be disconnected. Because people, I have said that the city of Tulsa is creating a homeless problem for many people. And that includes people being denied water service. So, now, this money is being spent to pay these water bills.
Ms. Bernice, we need to stay on the topic.
I'm on topic.
Okay.
Uh, there are new water meters being put in the area because of the complaint also. And also, there's an effort to put people's properties that they have inherited in their names rather than the city taking their properties and using them for whatever they want to use it for. Now, see, this is the kind of thing that we have going on here in this city. I don't think the mayor's talking about that during his visit, at this particular activity that he's participating in. But the people that are being affected by what is going on here, North Tulsa I'm speaking of in particular, but I know other people have concerns too. People need to be aware of what the problem is, how the problem is created, who's responsible for the problem, and what to do about the problem. So, that's something that's happening right now concerning how the city failed to, again, represent that area concerning water issues properly. You know, we can't ignore what's really happening in this city. And there's some, uh, we just need to learn how to, um, treat each other better and, uh, how to receive better treatment from other people. Because there is an ugly problem in this city. And it's about how we relate one to another and how the city government disregards the needs of the people in the North Tulsa community to the point that we have to keep filing, uh, federal complaints, state complaints, all kind of complaints to get things done. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Bernice, just to clarify, so you can let your residents know, the city is not, we're trying to save homes. We're trying to get those, help people get their taxes paid, get property that they inherited years ago that they could not afford to do probate, to get those in people's names so they can, it's called Save Your Home Initiative. And that's the, there's several of us on this council that have worked on that because we have constituents that need to get the benefits of grants and programs that we have that the properties are not in their name. So, we're actually helping homeowners that grandma maybe passed years ago.
I said that because these actions are taking place. We appreciate what you're doing now. But a state and federal complaint was filed to move you all to do these things. You might not know about that. The mayor might know about it because the city has been contacted about these things.
Yeah, I don't know anything. This was just ideas of the people on this council that we want, we can't stop homeless if people's taxes aren't paid, if they can't qualify to, to get grants to beautify their property.
See, I know of situations where
The mayor is very supportive. I'm bringing it back to the mayor because the mayor is very supportive.
I have known of people to go to that courthouse to get properties put in their names that they inherited, and the judge over there lied and said he wasn't the judge to handle those kinds of things. And he wrote me a letter to that extent. And I turned it over to the state attorney.
Call TEDC today because it ends, it's just a pilot to see if it's successful. But call, and I'm saying this so people in our audience can know, we're trying to save people's homes. So, call Tulsa Economic Development Corporation or go to the website so we can help people save.
It's unfortunate that it's been done by force. But probably what I need to do also
Brought the subject, so I'm in trouble.
Probably, uh, what I need to do too is make the council aware. Because I don't know whether or not you all know a lot of things that's happening to that community over there.
You can talk privately, but right now, we've got to go on to the next person. So, thank you, Ms. Bernice.
So, I can start making you all aware too.
Thank you. Is that all the speakers?
We have no more speakers.
Counsel discussion.
Move to approve items four, C through I.
Second.
Lori, please call the roll.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Fowler?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Q?
Yes.
Counselor Patrick?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Items four, C through I are approved. Five, authorities boards of commission. A rezoning application, Z seven seven five one, from RS three to RM two for multiple lots located southwest corner of thirty-eight West Avenue and West Fifty-Fifth, requested by Mark Reyes. B, rezoning application, C seven seven five A for, from OL and RS three to MX one U forty-five for property located at northeast corner of East Fifty-sixth Street and South Peoria. Do we have any speakers?
We have one speaker on item five A, Shirley Castro.
Good evening, council. Thank you for this opportunity. I am here because I am a resident of the South Haven area, neighborhood District Two. And I became aware that this area was about to be possibly rezoned from an RS three to an RM two. And I'm here to say, as a homeowner, and I just want to give you a little background, I am a Habitat homeowner. Habitat, as some of you might know, have built over ninety homes in that area. And, uh, just, this area has come up. And I want to share something with you that maybe you haven't heard before. South Haven is a jewel. And I want to tell you why. I've been there going on sixteen years, built my home along with my son and many volunteers from this community. And these homes are sponsored by businesses, agencies, civil groups, churches. And they give some funds and then we work. And I tell you, I have worked, never worked so hard. But that brings, that brings pleasure of owning your own home. At the time, I was a divorced mom with three children, and it gave me the opportunity to have affordable housing. And that was awesome. Since then, they've done research and surveys and found that parents of children who have owned their home, especially in the Habitat area, go to college. I have two children that served the military and gone on to get college degrees. So, it's true. It really is true. And why I say it, South Haven is a gem because it's probably the most diverse neighborhood. I wish you'd take a drive around there. It might not be the prettiest. But that will be the only neighborhood where you, where you will see black citizens, Hispanics, white, Asians. And we live as neighbors. We care about our house. You know, sometimes we might not have funds. Like, I'd like to have a fence. I don't have the funds for a fence, but that doesn't matter. We take care of our properties the best we can, and we are, uh, just take pride in owning our home. Why, I, I want to explain to you why I'm opposed to the rezoning. Because the Habitat homes are single-family dwellings. The gentleman, along with Gen, uh, Generation X, I think, or the company that's investing, uh, they want to build a duplex, two-story. And the gentleman has come to talk to some of the residents. But first of all, it doesn't go with our neighborhood. Our neighborhood is family, single-family dwellings, homeowners. These will be rented places. So, because he saw and heard our opposition, um, he's decided that maybe, okay, he'll bring it down to single level, but he wants to put four dwellings in a corner. We already have narrow streets. We have to be very careful when we back out of our driveways. So, putting four dwellings in one corner is not a good idea. But not only that, but then you have renters. Uh, we're not opposed to renters. We are neighbors to public housing. And in our neighborhood association, we include them because they are our neighbors. And, and we're working alongside those of us that are active with the Dream Center to, uh, you know, just have, get to know our neighbors, let them know about our, our association group that we're forming because we want to be a strong community and put the word out. So, I just wanted to take this opportunity to share with you all.
Ms. Castro, you have about fifty seconds.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to encourage you to oppose to this rezoning for those reasons that I have mentioned. Uh, let's keep it a family neighborhood and single dwelling. And, uh, that, that's what I want to present to you. And I thank you for the time. Thank you for listening.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anything, you know, we've had the public meeting, talking about it. Most of the residents seem content to make it as long as it was just one story. Is there anything that Ms. Reyes is, uh, you know, building a lot of property out there and is going to move that section that he's going to build the, you know, two stories back in the corner, more, I think, toward the, uh, Tulsa housing? And there are duplexes in there, and they have built some duplexes, I think, if I'm correct. But what would make that difference to you? Because I think it's going to be market rate rent on those houses. It's not going to be, you know, low income. And he lives in Tulsa, so he's easy to, for us to contract, uh, contact and have a public meeting if there's issues. But is there anything that would help you support development? Because we're in such need of housing.
But your question was, why do I oppose that?
No, my question was, what would make you support development there?
Uh, if, if he built a home that was going to be for sale. Now, it's my understanding, a few blocks down, he has some homes that he has built, and some of them are sitting vacant. So, that's the other thing. We don't want vacant homes, but we want homeowners, and we want them to go with the style of the neighborhood. There's certain style in a single dwelling, and that's
Counsel.
Thank you. Um, this may be, we'll see if you know the answer. This might be a planning question or, or maybe even other property owner or the developer. But, so are you, you're, um, I imagine that anyone who owns these homes could choose to rent them out at any time, though, right? Is that?
It's true, but most of us are still paying on the home. Some have already paid for their homes and they stay. And that's
Yeah. No, I just want to
Most of the neighbors are homeowners. And, and the other thing, I just wanted to let you know that people were notified within three hundred feet. I live
Oh, I have the list.
I, I, Ms. Jenny has the list. I live a block away and had no idea until this was mentioned in the neighborhood meeting. So, a block, less than a block away. I mean, how would you feel if you find out something is going up in your neighborhood and you never heard of it? And that's why I'm here. I've taken the time to get involved because I, I want you to hear my side. And not oppose, uh, let me mention one more thing. The folks that were in our meeting when Mr. Eric came to speak to us, a lot of them are from the housing. So, those folks are homeowners. And some of the homeowners were okay with single level. And I might stand alone. I'm one that wants to encourage you to not change the zone. Let's keep it single-family dwellings. Thank you very much.
Mr. Reyes, would you like to come up and explain? Oh, is there any other counsel questions for Ms. Castro?
Hello. So, um, after having the meeting and hearing the concerns from the neighbors, we have reduced the size of the structure and the number of units. There will be two single-story duplexes, side by side. We did submit to the plans, and the plans have been submitted to planning, and they are aesthetically in line with the rest of the neighborhood. That's about it.
There were some parking concerns last time. Did you resolve some of those?
That was because of the two-story four
We were looking at sixteen parking spots. Now, we're going to have four single driveways.
Chris? Well, as I've had the meetings with Mr. Reyes, that is an area of growth and development. And it's been very hard for me because I respect the neighbors and I represent the neighbors. But I know this council, and I know they feel like we need affordable housing. So, even though I totally, even if it's just one person, I support them. But I still have to go with the need for housing in our neighborhoods. And I will be monitoring Mr. Reyes. I have his cell phone. I have the area. And we're not going to let that
We're doing more construction and development in the neighborhood. It's not in our interest to come in and disrupt the neighborhood or upset the neighbors. Like, we, we want to have a relationship. Like, we're, we're here. We're, we're putting a lot of time, money, and effort into these neighborhoods to make it a better place. With the areas that we're building, we're vacant lots for many years. And all the houses that we have built or have been sold and are occupied.
And I know that we have talked and you want to sell more if it, you know, but there, again, it's a developing neighborhood. And I'm just blessed that people like Mrs. Castro bought into that.
Even with the duplexes, they, they still qualify, single-family, FHA, VA, conventional. So, a homeowner could buy one side and rent out the other side so it's more affordable.
We've got the Dream Center reopened. We've got a new park there. And I think we want to make sure that our older residents that live in the older homes know we have grants to fix our houses up. And I'm going to come, I'm going to have a neighborhood meeting to discuss that.
Wasn't mentioned before. All of our duplexes, including these, going forward, and the ones in Dock Harbor, are ADA compliant. And it's not, we're not looking for the subsidized housing, Section Eight, or low income. We're looking more towards the aging demographic to give more accessibility and housing options that haven't, we see a lacking and a need in that area. So, that's another aspect we've included.
Do we have any other questions for Mrs. Castro or for Mr. Reyes? With that, and Lori, would you please, uh, we're in the council discussion, so we will go ahead and call the roll.
Have we read item five B?
Yeah, I've read.
We have, okay. Move to approve, uh,
Is this our only speaker?
Items.
Chris, that was, wasn't it?
Correct, we have no more speakers.
Move to approve items five, eight through B.
Second.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Fowler?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Q?
Yes, with the idea, I will be watching all the houses that Mark rents and make sure because I live just across the way myself.
Counselor Patrick?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
With that, uh, items five A and B are approved. Item six, first readings. These items in this section of the agenda will not be read aloud. And without objection, items six, eight through H will be forwarded to the next council meeting.
Can I actually relate it to six? I'm curious, um, maybe this is just checking with City Legal. Is it possible to, if we wanted to consider six, H, tonight, what would we need to do?
So, the charter and council rules provide that ordinances will be placed on agenda for, uh, twice, for two readings unless there's a vote by two-thirds of the entire membership to consider an item on first reading. Council rules require a majority of a quorum to waive council rules. So, to consider something on first reading, you have to make a motion to waive charter and council rules, and it has to be approved by six affirmative votes.
Okay. Um, I'd like to move to waive council rules and consider item six, H, on first reading.
So, you would need to make a motion to waive both the charter requirement and council rules.
Okay, I'd like to move to waive both the charter and council rules and consider item six, H, on first reading.
Second.
Lori, would you please call the roll?
Counsel Bengal?
Yes.
Counsel Lakin?
Yes.
Counsel Fowler?
No.
Counsel Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counsel Q?
Yes.
Counsel Patrick?
Yes.
Counsel Bellis?
Yes.
Counsel Miller?
No.
So now the item is eligible to be discussed and considered on first reading.
So, yes. Okay. Do you want to go ahead and make it?
Counselor, we do have one speaker who signed up for this, just in case.
Okay. Mr. Alexander.
It's Mr. Joshua Starks.
Oh, Joshua. Oh, Josh, come on up. Could you give her your cell phone number? Could you give Ms. Castro your cell phone number so she can call you?
Good evening, counsel. When I saw that this was on first reading, I came down, just in case, to no pleasure of my wife, I promise you. She was very unhappy I had to leave the house. But this is important to me. When I saw the first committee meeting, the second committee meeting on this issue, as of today, I've just seen this flagrantly go through, and I really have no confidence or faith in this ordinance. There's some reasons for that. One is, is that as of today, by pulling the teeth out of it and saying, as I work in a nonprofit myself, that we don't have to admit that we're serving what the ordinance would call an illegal immigrant, that we don't have to acknowledge that, and then we don't get punished for it because we didn't see it. And so we just turn a blind eye to it and allows the ordinance to go forward, but without teeth. That makes no sense to me. That's useless legislation, first of all. And I'm really angry. Secondly, the history of immigration into our country, when it comes to our veterans and those that have served our veterans, and I know there's two people on the council that understand this. So in 1966, I'll start back really quick so we understand why I'm so angry about this. In 1966, after the Cuban crisis and the Bay of Pigs, and we abandoned Cubans down there on the shores in 1959, it took till 1966 for those Cubans that fled the Cuban government to get to the United States, were brought in on what's called TPS, Temporary Protection Status, with no legal path to immigration here. None. They were in a hold status with no documentation until 1966, when Congress passed a law to acknowledge them. They sacrificed. They went with us. We promised them that we would help them, and then we abandoned them. Again, United States, in Vietnam, the Hmong. When the Hmong were fighting amongst us, the landless people of Vietnam, I won't get all into it, but they fought alongside of us the entire war. We promised them we would give them a place. We promised them we would bring them home if this didn't work out. We would take care of them. We saw pictures of them whenever we opened up our history books. Our history book showed helicopters sitting next to buildings in Saigon with Hmong babies being thrown into those helicopters. So when they got back here, they did not have status. They were put on TPS, Temporary Protection Status. The last ones to give an acknowledgement was in 2020. Let that sink in. That's 50 years later. That's how long it took for Congress to recognize everyone. In that time, they had no documented status. They were brought in, they were brought out, one year on and then one year off, until Congress decided to think about it again some 10, 15 years down the road. 1974 covered most of them, not all of them. I went to a recognition ceremony for the Hmong. It honored their service and their citizenship. And for the first five minutes, it was amazing when I watched it, because I watched men that were in their 70s walking up missing limbs, that were ravaged by cancers, that were walking up there, getting recognized for their service and getting their citizenship. And that lasted about five minutes. The next 20 minutes of my life was listening to all the people died waiting to get acknowledged. Fast forward to Vietnam, or fast forward Afghanistan. We evacuated 67,000 Afghans. They were on Temporary Protection Status, which has now expired. I know, because I have interpreters that are here, that have no documentation. They are undocumented, which, under this ordinance, would be illegal. And I couldn't so much as give them a bottle of water from the VFW. Now, a bottle of water through money given to the VFW, I could take to the SBCA and give to a stray dog. But someone who fought and served next to me in Afghanistan, I couldn't so much as 110 degrees with them not having a house, give them a drink of water without being persecuted. I'm sorry, this is wrong on so many levels, not just from the veterans, but all the way around. Okay? There are men and women who fought with me, who fought with brothers and sisters from the past, that are waiting for their recognition. And some of them will die waiting for that recognition. But they don't give up hope. We shouldn't give up hope on them, and we shouldn't ban them from getting services that they need when they need it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Counsel discussion.
We have one more speaker, counsel?
Grant. Oh, one more speaker.
Mr. James Alexander Jr.
I thought you said you weren't speaking on this, James?
I didn't know I could. I got a simple thing. Not no, but hell no.
Counsel Miller, and then Counsel Fowler.
Yeah, so mine's just a procedural issue. I think that's something important enough to be in the charter and in council rules, both. We shouldn't try to fast-track, you know, voting on an ordinance when we haven't heard it all the way through or really considered it in full. And I think that there's a good reason why it's in our city charter, that we have two readings. It's so that everybody has an opportunity to be on notice of what's going on, be heard, and come up here and, you know, speak their part on it. And so I think fast-tracking this and waiving the charter and the rules is a way to eliminate the public from being able to be heard. And so for that reason, I would object to this.
Counsel Fowler.
Ladies and gentlemen, gosh, I've been down here going on four years. I don't think I've seen anything quite like this before. And I think this is just kind of a real cheap shot, quite frankly, a low blow. But with that said, let me, let me talk real quick about why I think this is a very important thing for our community. You know, you can't ignore what happens as far as the news feeds every night, either side of the aisle, wherever you are. But we've had a little over, and I was corrected the other day, I believe, over 3 million immigrants enter our border last year. 40,000 of them have made it to Denver, thousands more to New York and Chicago. Denver has somewhere a little over 700,000 citizens population. Their city budget is somewhere in the range of about $1 billion eight. They have spent $180 million of their tax dollars, not towards their unhoused, but for illegal immigrants that have no rights. They've spent another $12 million, $12.5 million, sending people to other cities. The Biden administration has sent a little over 300 immigrants to 42 different unnamed cities. They've been redacted. Here in the city of Tulsa, our city councilors, they've now voted to ask, ask us, the taxpayers, to take care of not only our unhoused, our least fortunate, but also now take on the burden, you, the taxpayers, take on the burden of now having to take care of immigrants who have no status. Now, there have been some folks down through the years, the Hmongs, the Cubans, the Afghans, they have, they have gone and, they have, they've gone and taken a legal pathway into our country. It's taken a while. So I'll take exception to that. So I really want to make sure that, especially the Afghan refugees, these folks were approved entry into our country before they arrived. These people on the southern border, they did not. There's a big, big difference between refugees seeking proper asylum and those who have entered our country illegally. And that's what I'm talking about. Ladies and gentlemen, I want everybody to look up and down the aisle, up and down the row. When we cast this vote, I want everybody in the city to remember who cast that vote. Every last one, I will see you in the political season.
I want everybody to remember who brought this ridiculous ordinance to the table.
Counsel Bellis?
Yeah, I would just like to clarify that the cheap shot is, per your point about asylum seekers and refugees you just spoke about, is that in the policy as written on this agenda, it actually includes saying that they are illegal as people. Like, how little thought for the harm this causes week after week is why I would like to motion to deny item 6H.
Counsel Pat?
Second.
I...
So I just want to reiterate that the fact that we are, the fact that however we vote here does not, is not indicative of necessarily how we feel about it. And that's the problem with trying to fast-track this and trying to deprive Tulsa residents of their ability to be heard on the issue. We have it in the charter for a reason. There's a reason why there's two readings, and that reason is being usurped by Counselor Bellis right now. And so I think we should at least have the public have the opportunity to be heard.
So I was next, so I was just going to say what I was going to say.
I didn't just act alone. Thank you.
It has to do with that very thing. The more credence and the more that this conversation is had in public, the more damage that it does. For every time that we say that it's okay to question somebody's immigration status, is another time that a child or a person is getting threatened because of the way that they look. In my district, where a majority of the people have brown skin, of undetermined, it is a real thing that they get treated differently. They get abused because of these conversations. So we need to stop this now because, because that's, if we can save one less person from getting abused because of this conversation, I'm all for it.
Counsel Bengal?
I appreciate that you're looking at this from a financial aspect. But again, I would be careful about pointing fingers at our colleagues about how they viewed this. I think several of us have tried to suggest to you that you take a collaborative approach on this. But the way I feel, this almost feels like a grade school kid who's come to school with their homework over and over and over, adding a different sentence, thinking they can get it through. And when you're put, have questions that are put to you, instead of doing those things, you've kind of just come back with just argument after argument. And the language has just gotten worse to me. So again, I feel like there was adequate support to help you to work on this so that it could be brought in a different way. But again, this is just something you've pushed on your own. So again, if this is how you choose to do it, then again, I'm more than happy for people to be pissed off at me because I voted against it. And I don't care who it is.
Counsel Lakin, then Counsel Miller, and then Counsel...
I'll just say, I tried to have a conversation with you last week or two weeks ago about this. And the ordinance that came back to us today was far worse than the ordinance that was originally presented and the ordinance that was revised the week afterwards. I communicated with you, and I said, I would never start anything this way. I would never surprise other counselors. I would work with other counselors to get collaboration on an item as important as this. And like Counsel Bengal said, you chose not to do any of this. The last thing that I'll say is if you are making your decisions based upon politics, then your guiding light is wrong. You should be using your heart and your brain. And I'm shocked and surprised that you are not using those things in determining what kind of legislation you put before this council and you put before the citizens of this city.
Counsel Miller?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly respond to Counsel Patrick. And I obviously respect Counselor Patrick a lot and appreciate the conversations we have. And I understand the harm that she's saying is being done by talking about this. But I still feel that it is our job to have tough conversations. And, you know, we come up here, we debate it, we listen to the public. And part of listening to the public is having it on twice. If it fails, if we hear from the public and it fails, it fails. That's part of the process. But also, part of the process is having hard conversations. They're not always easy. And I don't think that we should end around public input on such an important topic. And so for that reason, that will be the reason why I will probably vote along with, or separate or differently than Counselor Bellis or others who have shown support in this.
Counsel Fowler?
Counsel Lakin, councilors, there are a lot of people that have pretty well, they have gotten very, very tired of being looted and fleeced. They've fed up with it. And there is a very, very large asylum majority that you'll hear from, I promise you. People are tired of being looted and fleeced over and over and over. And we, we've still got people out on the streets. We can't even get them housed, and we're wanting to take on more. You're crazy. Absolutely crazy, Lakin. Come on. Grow up.
Can we call the roll? We have a motion.
Well, Counsel Lakin has something. Well, Jack, I have a question. If Counsel Fowler, if this does not pass, that he would form a committee and work with the councilors, could he bring this back? Now, that's wisdom, Counsel. Say it.
There's a, within a certain period of time, there's a provision, and Sarah might be able to help me.
Ninety days?
Ninety days, yeah.
After 90 days?
Yeah.
So is there any more council discussion?
I just have a point of clarification. So your motion was to deny. So if we vote yes, we are voting to deny.
Yeah, we're voting no.
Voting substantively on the motion, on the ordinance.
And our attorney says that's legal. So Lori, would you please call the roll?
Counsel Bengal?
Yes.
Counsel Lakin?
Yes.
Counsel Fowler?
No.
Counsel Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counsel Q?
Yes.
Counsel Patrick?
Yes.
Counsel Bellis?
Yes.
Counsel Miller?
No.
With that, the motion?
The motion passed. The ordinance was denied.
And it could be, if they work together and decide, well, they can bring it back anyway. But if, my recommendation would be get a group together. And I'm assuming Counsel Miller would be on that group.
I don't work in working groups.
Okay. But it can be brought back. So... So seven, so let's get to where, hold on, I've got to get back to where we, actually. So item H has been denied. Item seven, ordinance second reading A, ordinance amending the physical year 2023-24 budget to make supplemental appropriations of $1,150,000, recognized from unappropriated balance funds within the 2020 sales tax fund for community development at Comanche Park. Item B, ordinance amending the physical year 2023-24 budget to make supplemental appropriations of $575,000 from the Department of Justice to be received within the protective order and arrest sub-funds. C, ordinance adopting the 32nd supplement to the 7th revision of the Tulsa Revised Ordinance, codifying ordinance enactment between January 1, 2023, and April 30, 2023, providing certain exceptions for ordinances excluding, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances, protecting pre-existing rights, providing for copies to be deposited with the city clerk, providing for distribution of copies to the city departments and other... with the city clerk, providing for distribution of copies to the city departments and others, providing for the sale of copies with the emergency clause. Do we have any speakers?
We have two speakers on item seven A. First, Mr. James Alexander Jr.
Good afternoon again, how much time do I have?
Okay, give us just one minute.
All right, that's enough time. Okay, I'm talking on seven A. Seven A is about money that's been appropriated. I want everybody in TEGA to look up supplemental appropriation and learn what it is. Now, for my district, they have one million dollars that they want to improve Comanche Park redevelopment. And in that, they want to improve connectivity between neighborhoods, businesses, schools, streets, and regional trails. The problem I have with this is that you need to start at the beginning, at the front. You don't have a back door that looks better than the front door. If you do, you have a problem, and we need to straighten that problem out. We need to clean our house up. Our house needs cleaning. In the front of, front room of North Tulsa is Archer. Actually, it's the train track to Apache. We have a problem there. It's a racial problem. And it's an entitlement average which has been receiving money through model cities first, through HUD, and then community development block grant, which has been stolen from North Tulsa. Now, Comanche Park, a lot of people are not happy with the way this came out. I'm not happy. So I don't know why, I'm the only one standing up here, me and my wife, because a lot of people in North Tulsa are not happy with what's going on there. I say you get your butts up and come down to city council, talk to your council person, and tell them what's on your mind. I'm not afraid to. Any questions?
You should be happy just with that beautiful woman standing by you.
I'm happy to be alive.
Do we have any other speakers?
The next speaker is Bernice Alexander. We have no more speakers.
So with that, council discussion.
Move to approve items seven A through C with the emergency clause on seven C.
Second.
Lori, please call the roll.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Fowler?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Q?
Yes.
Counselor Patrick?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
With that, seven A through seven C are approved with the emergency clause on seven C. Eight council items. A, council announcements and reports on current community events, activities, efforts, and concerns, other than announcements and reports, no discussion will include. Do we have any council discussion at all, plans for activities, anything anyone would like to announce tonight? And with that, item eight B, District Four, 2021, capital improvement, sales, tax, community development, priority project, concept, plan number one, Dreamcatchers Park remodel located at eighteen seventy-five South Boulder Drive. C, resolution authorizing a destination designated official to submit a joint application with TPS for the Oklahoma opioid grant award, finding extraordinary need to combat the crisis. Do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers.
Council discussion.
Move to approve items eight B and C with the emergency clause on eight C.
Second.
Lori, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Fowler?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Q?
Yes.
Counselor Patrick?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Eight B and C are approved with the emergency clause on eight C. Nine, new business, we have none. Ten, hearing of appeals, we have none this week. Hearing of public comments, we have none this week. Twelve, we are adjourned.